All right, I'd like to call the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. And Sheriff really want to lead us in.
My allegiance to the plan. I say somebody. To the power of his stance. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Yan? Order.
Tara.
Yep. Tara.
It's actually a good one.
Okay.
Will we approve the refund?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, it's somewhere. You got to sign all two of them. The refund. Okay, but. I'll sign. Oh, okay.
There's one that there's one in that office. It was.
Oh, okay. Okay, so these are the refunds. Okay. I guess I'm yeah, I guess I'm will have to. Every time there's a refund, there's two signatures. Watch the minutes to make sure I go over and know what to do here. All right, thank you. Make a motion to approve second half payroll five nineteen. And the first half payroll for June six-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vouchers and invoices, anybody have any questions?
Don, do you have any questions?
Nope, no questions. Motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eighty minutes. A motion to approve the minutes from five-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
State settlements.
Who to approve the estate settlements?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ruth?
I think the first thing is the sheriff. Your made publication list. We could do it. Oh, that's great. I'm not that far away. That's the last.
Yeah. I'm not paying.
Not on it, this year.
Not that.
That just goes to the point where. Yeah, I was actually.
So I'll motion to approve the made publication list. All in favor?
Aye.
This Ruth is.
It goes to you?
Yeah.
Oh, it goes to Michelle, Ruth.
Yeah.
You can verify.
Hold on, bud. Okay. I don't want to give you that. I can't see.
You know what Nate said. Okay.
So real quick, you want to go?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to point at. About a thank you file from Wayne's at Fayette County. Says, thank you for taking the time to speak with all of us and give us insight into what goes with our county government. We deeply appreciate all you guys do. And all the time you take for the jobs. You have to uphold. Looking out, so there's also a letter here from Footman. Friends of old time music and dance of the Nile Valley. So they're writing to thank you administration maintenance staff at Fayette County Park. And their support for the annual dance weekend that was May fifty to seven. Apparently, there was a lot of issues and they all just worked right through it. They specifically named Wayne, Jerry, the rest of crew, thank Angel and her children having three of it as well.
And they issued infrastructure, like water line breaks and that kind of stuff, like wobbling. Condition.
No, it was things broken, which they're working on fixing all that, too. And then you guys had sent a letter to highways. About wanting a safety study on nineteen. Between. They call it corridor, corridor L between the bridge and. And they did an analysis of out analysis of crash data. And it says that the basically it's not any higher than anywhere else in the state. So they would continue to monitor that section in nineteen. To see if. And then also Kings Creek Road at Lionel is scheduled to have bankment repairs. Which I think was the other thing mentioned in that letter.
I do think we ought to issue another letter and and maybe ask the nine-one-one center to look into it about that intersection at Walmart. Because there are just so many wrecks there. I mean, it's constant. And I think something's off with the timing of the light. I don't know what else could explain.
Well, that and people driving incredibly fast.
That's true. That's true, but it just it it's worse than the Fayetteville stoplight, you know, so it's.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Yes.
Wrecks and stuff, but. We could get something like that together for the next day. Maybe nine-one-one.
People are used to coming to drop. Motherfucks twice as many people as that intersection than Fayetteville.
Probably, well, yeah. No, yeah, but I don't know if it's numbers. I mean, this the traffic should be moving slower at that intersection.
The next intersection up to is the Exxon going across over to the.
It just seems. Oh, yeah, on Shell section.
Yeah. So what I'll do is I'll I'll send it to John and have him contact. The DOH. I think they're doing one for the whole nineteen or something. You talk about a study to say.
Are they?
I think they've already moved to do a study on on from one end to the other, I think.
Mr. Ruth, are you talking about pictures of Walmart?
Yeah.
You could only get a new car now, one hour, half party wants to go back, but since gas has been ending, pull up your pay.
Yeah, that's I I mean, I think we have the data. It's just. And I mean, do you think? I mean, I think there's an inordinate number of wrecks there, even given the traffic there. It just seems crazy to me.
It's a. It's like anything else, you're give and take. I mean, traffic is bad, and we all know that because of how long the traffic has been and stuff. I mean, it was the same way down in Glen Jean. I'm not changing this.
But is there a way to time the lights to maybe give more time between the red light and the green light or something? I don't.
I think they can, and you know, we talked in like work or anything.
I'll see.
I'm pretty sure that you can do that.
We'll see you on the day. I'll ask them. So don't do that until I get back to you.
Right?
Yeah.
I think they can change the time. They probably come from Charleston that does that. We've asked a question about that before, and I think they did it once already.
We did a study when I was on MBO.
Okay, so the next thing is to appoint Diana Kincaid to the New Haven PSD. Does have any comments on that from New.
We would support it.
I move that we appointment of Diana Kincaid.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next thing is we got a letter from the DOT. Saying they have funding available to study and replace the bridge at the animal shelter. So you guys, you need a cover letter with it, and it does say in this letter. If you have any special considerations or concerns, please include those in the cover letter when you return your signed agreement.
So some good news on that is that they can make it bigger.
Two copies.
And they could even move it. Those were the two things that we noticed when she read it.
It definitely needs to be bigger because you can't get a garden shelter.
Like the capacity needs to be greater.
You drive across it in that traffic.
Yeah, yeah, I did not like barely sit on a regular sized pickup. A little bit bigger than a regular.
Oh, no, that's something.
Questions to prove that agreement, if that's what you want to do, and then we'll have to run the letter. Let me wait for you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
You said there's two places on here, Ruth.
No, it should be the same thing with them. It's just two copies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then you have letters to the Public Service Commission of Penn, West Virginia American Water, Appalachian Power Company, and Mountaineer Gas Company requesting rate increases.
I reviewed and edited all of them. I will note that combined, these proposed increases are going to exceed forty dollars a month for the average. Household in Fayette County, which is exorbitant in my view. But we've, you know, we're forcing our or expressing our objection. We don't know how much weight it will carry, but we're certainly going to put it out there.
I like it.
Let them know.
Yeah, I like.
You guys, I sent you guys copies of those yesterday.
Yeah, letters.
And we approve the letters.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So the logo RFP. Response on their notes. I think you look there with the response, please.
They're all over the map.
They are.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out how we can, and not a single one of them proposed a logo to us. They all came in with, if we were to propose a logo, this is what we would do. What were your thoughts on it, Amy?
I'm saying, and I actually did you see that message I sent you? I just tried to pull together some stuff. There are, what, ten maybe companies that I found locally? I've realized, I've learned in the meantime, but we can reach out to, as long as we're doing more than three, three or one. We can reach out to people and ask specifically, request proposals. So there are. Plenty of local companies.
Can we also reach out to the, isn't there an art association, the one that's right by the public, the Center's Office?
Me and Fayetteville? Yeah, we can do that.
And reach out to them, too, and because I know I know a couple of local artists who express interest in being involved in the design of the seal and the logo, but.
And I use the company for my logo. Cost me. I think three hundred and ninety dollars, and I had endless amount of changes. That I could have to it until it was finished. So.
That's that's a lot more reasonable than.
Yeah, I mean, it was back and forth. It took you six or eight months to do it. But I'd make the changes. And they give me six every time I make the changes, send it back. I picked three, I didn't send it back. They brought me six. They sent me six more. Made the changes, send it back. It's a process, but for three hundred, I think it's three hundred and ninety dollars. I'm not going to say who the company was, but. I mean, I think that's what we need, somebody that was willing to go back and forth for a certain amount of money, as many changes as we want.
I think the good news is is that we have ten companies in this county alone, because it really. Would make a difference to know about this county and its heritage and, you know, things that we might want to see.
Yeah.
In an updated.
I don't have a problem.
Logo. I like that idea, so.
I can rework, I can rework the existing language that we have, just to kind of pare it down. And so it's not so plentiful sounding and some doubt.
Okay, and to set a budget. Like. An amount you don't want to go above, because some of those were.
Will not include like relocation and travel time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know. Only thing I did is gave the first initial. Design or recommendations or information, and then they took it from there. That's all I had to do, and they went from there.
You probably attach a copy of the current logo.
Okay.
And and our priorities about, you know, tourism, climate change, tourism, economic development. And our pride in the in our coal mining heritage. But.
But that way.
I think any local company is gonna, but what, but budget wise, I guess it's going to depend on. For me, my level is going to depend on. The scope of the, you know, what.
Some people has a certain amount, keep only one time change, due time change and and unlimited changes, at least the company I dealt with had that. And I took unlimited, so I mean, if you give, if you bid it out, I let them give you the price.
You can set a budget of that and then give them something to strive.
Yeah.
That's less.
If you, if we say thousand dollars, we'll say a thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
I I I agree with Ms. Taylor on that. I suspect they should, for a simple thing of us going back and forth, give us a price. And we'll give the, the way I see it, we ought to give the initial, because we've asked the public to give their thoughts on it, and we haven't had any response. Am I wrong? So I think the commission needs to come up with something. Send it and go from there. We only gave six months' chance in having six months' chance. Anybody want to come up?
I move we authorize Amy to go ahead and put something together and send it out to those companies.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
With the amount of artists that we have in the area.
So.
We'd have something.
So what?
Oh, yeah, it's all right. I'm glad y'all keep up with the time.
I'm gonna have to work that.
Okay, so the next. Approved copy of the will to be admitted to the project in the state of. Forest, Logan, and bottom.
It's a. It's Anthony's.
Michelle or Anthony, can somebody tell us?
Yeah. Whoever. Whoever.
Okay.
Okay. You want to come up for me?
I only vaguely remember, she's only had a copy of it. That's it. It's it's it will, it's the downtown office.
She put a copy of the official on. Then the numbers. Yeah, I don't know. How did you sort of copy of that? They were here for the funeral, and you just click that and read all of it. Yeah. When is that documented in your office?
I would assume that Lisa has something. In his book. That I I remember this happening, and then I've forgotten that this was only over today. It 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 was been several weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, is if we can get the information.
Because she came in publicly quite a while. I didn't discuss that. Lisa Mike, too.
It takes a while.
Sure. I haven't seen a copy. So.
Well, it's not here. Just a moment. We're just trying to figure out what we need to do to get this done. We can have a seat, ma'am, if you want to, until we. Get her in here.
Yeah.
What you saying? Why wouldn't want to stand there? Might just move on, but we can.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, but but. Angela's here, isn't she?
Well, Ruth can go through her way.
Oh, okay, Ruth, okay.
Records.
Okay, I agree. Good.
This is the records management preservation grant award contract. This is for banners and. That. Yeah.
Is it a Obama grant match issue?
This is just the records management. They awarded it. Okay, we just have to accept it. I move accepted.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
One of these others.
That one we need to skip, go on executive section.
A is the continuation of our legal counsel commitment.
So. Basically, our outside counsel, Michael Taylor, who's been with Bailey and Wyatt, is moving to another firm that has agreed to accept our business at the same price. So we would need to make a decision whether to retain or to continue our retaining Michael or whether we're going to continue with Bailey and Wyatt as a firm.
Right.
It's my view, for continuity's sake, and given the quality of legal advice we've gotten, and then consultation with prosecutor and attorney. That we should retain, continue to work with Michael Taylor at the new firm, and then we can defer any business that they turn down to Bailey and Wyatt and futures and say, that's a good job.
I agree. I'm going to put it in English, for longer terms. He's been with us. He's been with. He's been with us and knows the ins and outs for the last year, so. Two years. That's a simple terms. There's still longer terms. I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. So I'll motion that we retain Michael Taylor's services.
Second.
All in favor?
And there's got to be legal reasons to do it, too.
I was. Throw that in. Oh, goodness. Go ahead, Ruth. I'm sorry.
And then the the next two would be the special with legal counsel, too. And then number eleven, just to finalize the nine-one-one director and deputy director, because. I don't remember when it was. We played an I game that we never.
It was late last year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I move that we appoint Tonja McMullen as the nine-one-one center director, permanent director, and Philip. Pack, pack, space his name, as I said, Philip Pack is the deputy director.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the other two, we go back, yeah.
This might be a good time to break our fingers.
Hey, Rick, we'll just go ahead and take a break. Well. Maybe not. Okay.
Yes. That was well to all the benefit hearing certified returns each back in March. Listen, I remember it. Two months ago.
I would have been issued.
Was, is there anybody, so are the beneficiaries, are the deceased kids or?
He didn't have any.
Okay, so. So siblings, so we're siblings, so all the siblings have been notified?
Yeah.
No kids? Right.
So.
Were all of them even who weren't named in the will served? Did everybody, is everybody named? So everybody's named in the will?
Yeah.
Who's not deceased?
Yeah.
Okay. What sounds to me like notice.
No, he's.
They have kids, too.
If they didn't, we are. Don't talk to the deceased. It was only.
And they think they've got.
You have.
Yes. It only comes here in almost. Problem, problem is, I think. Notice if you serve on any of the heirs who would take them to really test its succession. In being. If he didn't, wasn't married, didn't have kids, it would be his siblings, siblings passed away prior to his passing, it would be their children.
Do they have children?
They didn't get there. Would pay him for you, pay you down. If you don't want. Yeah. Yeah, it is. Yeah, I would go to the one that's living. Okay, but that's not true. I hope that you understand, but you know, I'm trying to give you a hard time, but. The reality is, is beneficiaries who take the test, investigate succession. I think we have a standing to complain about this will leaving the pervert. So I think the children of deceased. Basically, his nieces and nephews. Who were the children of deceased siblings need to be served in the now of the petition.
Here's the, here's the operative language, just for the record. If any of my siblings predecease me, the deceased sibling's share shall not pass to any beneficiary of that sibling. The proceeding, the predeceased sibling's share shall be divided equally amongst my remaining siblings. What the the problem the prosecutor has, the question is, regardless, so. Before we can accept this will as fact, anybody who would, just by virtue of law, if there were no will, has to be notified. So so if there were no will, the way people inherit, it it would be your spouse, and then your kids, and then your siblings. And then if any of those people have passed away, their kids, whoever their beneficiaries are, if there weren't a will, for us to accept a copy of a will. We have to make sure that everybody who would have inherited by law, if there weren't one, was aware, which is why the kids need to be served notice. Just in case they want to contest it, not because it won't eventually get admitted into evidence, because it is the best evidence. He had a will. So what we need to do is go back and and send that notice, have the clerk's office send that same notice to the children of your deceased siblings. How many are we talking about? Oh, my goodness. Well. Unfortunately, we have to do that, and for the ones we can't reach, we have to publish it in paper. Yeah, and and what this will do is make sure that once you get started on this, somebody to come out of the woodwork and then try to put a wrench in all of it.
And maybe have another will.
Yeah, or come up with another will. Or somebody might have the original. So you've got to make sure that. I know. No, well, the original, the original would be different. If you have an original will, then we wouldn't have to worry about what the law says, but if you're dealing with a copy. Then you have to make sure that there's nobody out there that's going to crawl out of the woodwork after you accept a copy. The original is is notarized. Am I getting this right? The original is notarized and. And if signed by two witnesses and it's, you know, but copies can be altered, and that's that's, you know, the the premise behind it. So if there were no will, the law would say the siblings get it, and if not, if the siblings have passed away, their children. So we have to notify those children just in case there's, they have concerns about this copy.
The problem is, is these are never. Show up and say, well, I saw him pull out the original will and shred it and pour it up and said, I don't think this would be my will. That's that's the, I'm not saying that happened, but the problem is, is we need to make sure all of the people who would have received according to this estate. If there wasn't a will, they're notified, so that if they feel that they have some basis to object to this copy, then you need to prove it, and they can come forward and make an objection.
Or you miss Stevens.
Yeah.
Michelle, can your office help Miss Stevens with this? Because it sounds like a huge task to make sure that everybody gets served properly.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if, you know, if you can't find them, then we'll. Publish it in the paper. And it has to be published in the paper for certain, maybe three weeks, three weeks. We'll we'll figure out how many weeks, but it has to be published in the paper a certain number of weeks, and if they don't come, it's just like if there are any debtors, like as soon as you do file it. If there are any debtors, it'll go in the paper, and they'll have a certain number, amount of time to come forward. So if they don't come forward during that time, then we can proceed with this.
And this is why we always need to ensure that. The original is kept in a safe place.
Or in the clerk's office.
And the person who is staying with the state needs to know where it is.
Yeah.
And then their backup needs to. So when you don't find, so you don't find yourself in this.
I wish people did. So we will do everything we can to help you expedite this, okay? Sorry, it's going to take, we'll get it on the agenda as soon as it's done.
But this Stephen.
Ma'am.
Got to receive PR office.
All right, nine thirty. And Miss Angela?
No.
Hey, Ruth, things are with bases on the back.
Depending on how. The case forty-nine, it's the third slide, just because there are here, I don't want to make. Just because there are here, I don't wanna make.
The third slide?
Yes. Alright, so it is case forty-nine, it's five thirty-six, Mount Olive, Brandon, Hamilton. The beautification um committees. Set on the twenty-seventh of April, and we felt that the property is abandoned and is not being used. Residents, the roof or dwelling is compromised. It appears to be in a general state of repair and is not connected to any utility services. They did vote and recommended that the property be demolished within thirty days. The property owner is here, she came to our meeting and she is here today.
Come up ma'am.
So what are your thoughts about the? Beautification committee's recommendations?
Well, I, I agree. It was. That to me that I might have some probably Sarah enough. To pay back the money, I don't agree to do that. Um, because I am the same young man. Don't have a lot of money, but. Did it not? Their property's not in the circle.
There, there may be another option too, I don't know whether, I mean, they. Even bring it up if you're willing to do that, but. Is, do you wanna keep the property?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, that answers my question.
Yes, I want to keep the property. Uh, it's, it's not very much property, I'll gather, and it is too odd, so. And it. Rebounded so far back. And it was unleashed, we almost stole it, you know, it's not very expensive then. But I'd like to know that in fact, decided to sell it. That I could sell it and pay off the debt. And I would like to, because I don't know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna be seventy-seven pretty soon. And I'm not very good, I've been out there and tried to work. I worked one day, all day, and picking up our paper and everything round out. And I was down for three days, so.
That's a, that's a lot for anybody.
Yeah, it doesn't help me very much to be down because I do take care of my ninety-four-year-old father, my father. And uh, that's a job in itself.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, well, I appreciate you coming in. It means a lot to come in.
Need to do anything that's not right on my neighborhood or. Or anyone, I would like to know who turned it in to begin with. Maybe that is not feasible.
It came from the health department, David. The complaint came to me from the health department, so the health department might know.
And I don't know if they tell me, I don't know if I talk to them.
I don't know. I have a question for you, it's independent of that, do you live up Hamilton also? How's, how's that situation up there from the flood? Is it, can you still smell, do you still have that sewer issue?
And the warmer it is, the worse the smell.
No, I guarantee it, well, we, we wrote a letter to the governor asking him to declare a state of emergency about that to try to get some. Funding and, and to allow whoever provides the funding to circumvent some of the bureaucracy that takes too much time to fix stuff like that. Um, we probably need to follow up on that, but I, I just wanted to know from somebody who lived up there, because I've been down there for a while. I grew up in, in Adena, on Montgomery and Adena. Um, but I. But I haven't been down there since right after the floods, as far as that's the hollow, so I didn't know. Uh, what was going on, I wanted to hear from somebody who lives there, so it's, so it's still coming from Mount Olive? Is your water service restored?
Our water, we do have, we do have our water service, but the sewer is. If it's cool outside and raining, you don't get a big smell when you go down the harbor. But that sewer smell is so strong in the warm outside that it, even with your winters rolled up, it breathes.
Where does it start?
Yeah.
And it starts. Probably about a mile and a half, two miles past the prisons.
Okay.
One hour, it starts way before we turn to get any houses.
Yeah.
Why they ever running through the creek is. I missed.
Yeah, I agree.
But when they did put the prison, they gave us gas and, and water. And that's what we got, and. I'm not having problems with my father. The only problem I have now is my response. I got a spring, another leak, so I had to shut it off.
Right, I had to do that this year.
And that, and I was in. Uh, I didn't turn it back on yet, I need to, it's a plumber, and I think I'm getting by who does plumbing.
It's hard to find.
More than I've got.
Well, I'll give you the names who I use. If you want one, I've got one up here, might come down. It's local.
They said that the water was having a problem, and I know that the. West Virginia, we've been wanting to buy our water, cut me out, but. Uh, I don't think that West Virginia should have all of it. They, their payments now are so high for people, I, I can afford water.
Their rates are interesting.
You're willing to work for the county, you don't go into this issue, you go onto its property.
Yes, I am.
Yes. We only need to lean on the property. We can work it.
We can work with.
The process. It's streamlined, it works much easier, the property owner is cooperative with us. How do we protect the counties in this fight, they would either bust them property or. Get it taken care of that way. It makes it much easier.
Yes, I, I don't know.
Ms. Gerald's gonna get you.
I got it, I got it.
Okay, so we'll be interested.
Yes, thank you very much. Coming in.
Telling my. Um, thanks for letting us know about that, we will follow up with the governor on that.
Thank you. Awesome, I was up there two weeks ago next morning.
Oh, I'm sure.
My, my pick barn doesn't smell like that.
Excuse me, we will be, she will be notified by mail?
Well, oh yeah, let's go through the process, so don't worry about that, you can call my, any mailing address.
Thank you ladies, thank you ladies.
Y'all need to vote on anything on that? And I don't.
What?
They don't even need to vote on that?
I think just, you know, some of them, I'm just talking. Yes, we want to argue working in this phones. That they work with her. To basically attain. Appraisal of the cost of the demo disposal, and work with her to prepare a document and. Uh, some type of aim document. Interesting operation.
Yeah, so moved.
Second, own favor. Aye, and I'm gonna get some, I want some notes put together, Anthony, if you don't mind, that I can put up here on motions. For this situation, so I can just read them off. Yeah, I appreciate that, I mean, I. Yeah.
He has three cheat sheets up here on there.
Yeah, there are.
And you'll go back.
Okay.
Oh no, that's.
Alright, so um, the next case is case twenty-one, it's fifteen thirty-five Sanger Road, of the West Virginia, two five nine oh one. Uh, beautification met on the twenty-seventh, um, property's abandoned and not being used as residence, it appears. To be unusable, the dwelling is partially covered with vines of vegetation, the roof of the dwelling is compromised. And it does not appear to be connected to any utility systems, so they did vote that the structure be demolished and legally disposed of. This property has sat in that condition for about fifteen years. I am. Sent letters, but no response at all. The gentleman, um, they live in West Virginia, not.
Okay, but not in Fayetteville?
Not pickup.
Okay, uh, okay.
So. And if you guys need more pictures, I do have more.
I move we approve the beautification committee's recommendation regarding this case.
Second, on favor.
Yes.
And you also want to assess the civil penalty. For fifty dollars a day, not to exceed the cost of demolition, it's first.
Yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Second, own favor. Now Angela, only before you go anymore, I just wanna ask one question, I didn't see the address or where you noted. Whether they're here, am I missing something?
I just, only thing I've been doing is the address.
Okay.
If you want me to tell you where they're at.
Well, I mean, I'm.
I can verbally or whatever.
Verbally is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, okay, alright, you're right. Well, see, that's, that's what I wanted to see if you can just write it on here for us.
To us for part of the packet, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I thought we.
Don't wanna embarrass you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I thought this.
I sold the property?
Yeah. As a land contract?
What?
As a land contract?
Yeah, they're actually, they've actually signed deeds. Um, now one. With the case involving um. All from, they were putting Samu down or whatever, compared to certain part, but those two bought the, uh, two of the properties. And they're planning to renovate, so that's not really a concern. But the other one, landless, sold on three two. An unknown owner.
It's on this list today.
Okay.
Yeah, process because we had to. Yeah, so I mean, some of them are gonna be.
I mean, we can, we can just start doing notices, list pendants preemptively, we want all of these.
Maybe we should, I mean, we don't wanna keep. Our tails on it.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we need to think about.
Well, do, how hard do we have to think? Can we do it today? Can we just make a motion that you word for us?
I mean, yeah, I mean, okay, I've did this before, so you can just go ahead and make the list pendants and then figure everything out, and then make the motions to.
Well, basically, the notice of this pendant is simply put. The buyers on notice that.
Should they do a deep search? Yeah, possible, yeah.
What?
I mean, we're crossing the complaint, the problem is they sell me things without.
Yeah, so, well, they do sell without title search.
Then they come in and ask me about it.
Yeah.
So they're selling without title, but, but that.
Oh, it happens all the time.
Well.
Well, I mean, it, it might help in some cases, but at least it'll give them notice when they come in to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, when I was in private, I just, I couldn't tell you many times that people come in to. And one of the D, I would compare D, what you need to title search, I'll know.
Well, can we make it a standard on this automatically, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, can we incorporate that into our?
We can, I mean, we can, and um. You know, it's just one of those things that. I think a lot of, I think a lot of what's right, because I mean, the case regarding the man, those. People came in and told Angela, they were planning to sell from the end. With the land request, I suspect. We have the same thing happen on in Spillers. The exact same thing, when we started the process down there, he actually hadn't installed the payment contract. He conveyed the property and had the buyer sign a deed of trust, so it shifted ownership. And shifted responsibility. So, but we can go ahead and do that alone, but we probably should include it, um, we should probably revisit. Case twenty-one and Pat, we got another suspended spendings. Filing as part of that. Uh, kind of issues.
Okay, well, I move that we incorporate filing the expendance. Um, on these properties, including case twenty-one. Um, on which we've already voted.
Second, own favor.
Aye.
Right, next one is case twenty-two. And beautification met on the twenty-seventh of April. On this one fifty-three, East Street, Pro, Winona, um, it is. Not used as a residence. And partially collapsed, this property was actually going to be packed sale for. Since twenty seventeen, there's been nobody even sitting on it, but I guess legally it is still in the property owner's name, so. The board did recommend that the property be demolished and disposed of within thirty days.
I'll make a motion to approve uh. Beautification committee's recommendation. On the, what's that called, Anthony with the. Fifty.
Fifty dollar base civil penalty not to exceed the cost of demolition.
Can we not make that our routine? And then if we decide to accept the routine, then we can make it. Make that a part of our process, so.
That will do it.
So I move that we make what Anthony just said. Our process.
The motion for our process.
And then.
A second, okay, it looks like the Three Stooges up here, all in favor.
Who's who, right? Alright, um, next is case point N is. Uh, is three seven five four, the Royal Creek, perfect, the West Virginia. Beautification met on the seventh, and property's abandoned, not being used as a residential business. The dwelling is compromised, and they're repaired, they're utility services. And they did vote to have it demolished within thirty days.
Do we know whether that vehicle is also abandoned at?
Yes, it is, yeah. I did not own that property for the cylinder trespassing, but that vehicle.
Anywhere of those.
In this picture, we got in there some. Oh, that property.
So, um, I'm, I move that we accept the beautification committee's recommendations and assess the fines. The civil penalties. As per our practice.
Second, own favor.
Aye.
The next one is one sixteen, and this is the one we were referring to. Um, this is four oh three one Deepwater Mountain Road, we had started the process, went through the process, and when Anthony was getting ready to serve. Plank, he informed me that the owner, who magically, a week after he does. Approved it, sold it for eight thousand dollars. So I did send two notices to the new property owner, um, but same, I went through the process again, the board voted. That it is unusable and unsafe for human habitation, and they voted once again to have it removed within thirty days. But it was sold magically for eight thousand.
Magically is, is a big, yeah.
Okay, so I move we approve beautification committee's recommendations for this property and assess the civil penalties. Um, for our policy.
Second, own favor.
Aye.
He's totally in the groove now, girl.
I'm writing it down. Anthony, you don't have to give a cheat sheet on me.
Alright, the next one is one twenty-eight thirteen sixty-nine, Wall with Thrive, Kimberly, West Virginia. Um, it's based better than seven, abandoned and not being used as a residence or business, the dwelling is partially covered with vines of vegetation. General state of disrepair and is the. Utility systems. Um, I did, the property's son did call. And they said they were gonna work on it, but the board felt so it sat in that exact same disrepair for ten years. That he was not gonna be able to uh. Do anything, so they did vote for it to be completely demolished, this is a front of it at the time, uploaded.
Oh yeah, I've seen that.
Ooh, it's way over.
Yeah. History.
So, or did vote to have it demolished within thirty days. So car come with the property, it's a car and there is an old, old car inside the garage, I don't know what type of car it is, but it was a very old truck of some sorts. At one point in time, it actually was a drug house and that was a stolen vehicle. That was in twenty-eleven, so I'm through all that.
Well, I make a motion to approve the beautification committee's recommendations and asset, assess. The civil penalties for our policy.
Second.
Own favor, I thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Alright, I'm getting there, um, the next case is one forty-nine, one oh seven seven Armstrong Creek Road. Kimberly, West Virginia, two five eight. On this property, board voted on the twenty-seventh of April. And it is not being used as a residence or business, the dwelling is partially covered with vines of vegetation, it's a general state of disrepair, it's not connected to any utility systems. I did go in this property yesterday and every window is busted out, um, so the board did vote to have it demolished. Um, I see the notification and it's a. It, the deed says that the property owner, they used it as like their, it was at some point in time an apartment, like split up. Um, but it was a residence, so it's, it's a larger corporation.
Yeah, the owner. The owner has state of the gas station.
They have the means to demolish it, but they've not responded to any.
Will I make a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the beautification committee's recommendations and assess the civil penalties for our policy.
Second.
On favor.
All right.
The next one is one fifty-four. It does not have a nine one one address because even though you can't see it, it is burned and that's all you can see from the road, but it's six thousand R number, can't believe it. Um, and it is not being used as a residence and it is. Collapsed, so the board voted on the twenty-seventh, have it demolished, you know, I do. Um, and been thirty days, so it was recently sold at a pack sale. Anthony said that really doesn't matter, but just let you guys know, taxes were not paid last year.
So it's a new owner, but it doesn't.
Well, it has an eighteen months.
The record owner retain ownership until such time that the position of the person. Qualified tax.
Okay, so eighteen months, I guess, something like that. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve beautification committee's recommendation and assess the civil penalties per our policy.
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
Okay, uh, next case is two oh four, two eighty-three, Stone Hall Road, South Virginia. Um, this actually. Property they live up on the hill, but this was a complaint. This is a single lot. So the board basically said that was not being used as a residence and it obviously collapsed, so their motion was to remove the single lot. Um, since there is a residence also in the property, but their motion was that single lot within thirty days.
So is that the whole single lot, all that showing?
Yes.
Wow.
There's other decree of the property, but unfortunately not one that's made that for us, but this is the only thing moved to the press.
And have you referred that to the political?
I'll make a motion to approve beautification committee's recommendations and assess the civil penalties per our policy.
Second.
On favor.
Last one is two oh seven, it is two two four four Deepwater Mountain Road, Fayetteville, West Virginia. Um, four million twenty-seven, and it is not being used and partially collapsed, so the board did vote to have it removed within thirty days.
Make a motion to approve beautification committee's recommendations and assess the civil penalties per our policy.
Second.
All in favor. Well, some of them just.
Hey, um. With the uh. I sent an email this weekend concerning the phone call that I got from Oak Hill Fire Chief. Uh, concerning the house at six twelve.
Yes.
What's the uh, status?
Um, the status on that one, I guess, um. That one has two property owners, so one of the property owners did live in Fayette County. And they finally were able to serve one of the property owners. The other property owner is in Pennsylvania, I'm pretty sure, so I'm trying to get ahold of their sheriff's department, but. You know, that's something I put on the agenda, so we, I think we have to serve both of them before you guys can officially order.
Is that the one?
Okay.
Is that the one on the intersection?
Yeah.
Had another fire this past week.
But I do think.
I mean, what's, what's the problem with getting your sheriff's?
I faxed it to them. I mean, I just haven't heard yet if they served them or not, because all the sheriff's departments that I've contacted out of state, they say just fax it what you want. Not yet. Really said, ask them to waive it.
They want you to.
But that's the status on that.
They might waive it for the government, yeah, not civil.
I'll follow up, like I said, I finally got through to them, but I know one of the things Anthony talked about, a lot of these owners. Having a hard time even serving, I mean, it took two weeks just in Fayette County to get served and one was unable to be served, so is there any other way to? The address that we had on the tax thing said it looked like it was a vacant house itself.
Is that the white one beside of it?
No, this was not this case this weekend.
And to be honest, the house that we're talking about. The way I got the address, I went into the magistrate report and found the addresses where this person. That had some dealings in magistrate boy, basically got addresses from different cases. And apparently one of them was the right address.
To what extent do we need to do that, though? If it's not the address that they list on the tax ticket, can we publish them?
Problem, the problem is when you have two owners, they're only going to send the tax ticket to one address. They're not going to send it to every single owner, so. What?
They only sent it, I think they sent it to both.
This one.
Hmm.
Yeah, it only goes to one, and as I understand it, maybe you're correct, if I'm wrong, the property owners doesn't make, or they want the tax ticket sent.
So the property owner, if there, um, there's a reason I'm asking this. So if there's two different, if they're joint property owners, the other property owner can request for a copy of it?
Oh, sure.
Okay, okay, every, every year they could ask. So if there's two separate property owners. Both property owners can ask for a tax ticket every year, so they don't forget to pay their taxes.
One ticket.
Their share of the taxes.
One ticket is mailed out. On the fifteenth of July, and that goes to whoever had requested a ticket. If the other person wants a ticket. They have to get online and, and print it off or call the office and get one. We don't, the, the, the only other way that that would happen where multiple people can get a tax ticket is if it's an undivided entrance.
If what?
If it's an undivided entrance, it's set up as an undivided entrance, so. You know, for whatever reason, you have fifty percent, they have fifty percent, and it's set up as an undivided, then there's two tax tickets, you're going to go out.
Okay, okay, that makes, okay.
Ninety-five percent of them are not that way.
Okay, I just thought it was weird that it, only one person.
The preference would be to have personal service on these purple people as opposed to trying to serve them through publication. And it's not necessarily instrumental, I mean, we get this all the time, prosecuting laws, it's a lot of witnesses. Who. We have to let it nail, when the law are able to see it, finding, but you know, there's, there's ways of finding. So it would be my preference to actually personally serve the property of the recipient.
But just like we do in a criminal setting, could we not? Set up a process that this is what we're going to do and document that we made those attempts to serve them personally and.
Well, the, the ordinance says we have to serve.
No, I agree, but I mean, I think like where we draw the line, I mean, I, I think we should attempt personal service, but, but once it fails.
Well, yeah, and that's basically the process we're taking is we're trying to, trying to go back, person is serving, we've not reached it. I've been able to provide addresses on every case so far to.
Yeah, like I said, we have the one in Fayette County, they attempted to serve it and they brought it back to be seen not served.
First time that we. That I've, it's been brought to my attention that I had the skill to provide and it turned out to not be the address for the property, so. It would be my, it would be my intention to see what I can figure out as far as an actual address for this person, and then if not, we can go the route of publication.
Follow up with the other sheriff's department, like I said, all of them have been okay with, you know, just fax it and we'll work on it, okay? That belongs.
All right.
And we do have one that you guys had heard, um, you don't have to make it, but he had, um. Last two meetings, he had come here and unfortunately he has a new deed of trust with a new person, so he is no longer the property owner. But, so. No, it was too much for him. You know, the cost of repair was too much, so a new, supposedly the new property owner is. Remodel it, but it didn't matter.
Well, I mean, if everyone was just like.
Yeah, so I mean, we're keeping on it as a case, but that one is not, I told him not to come back because he doesn't.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, no, that's what, that's what I'm doing, I'm looking for John Stump. He's not, he's not showing them, man. Hey, John, you on there? You going to check, I can go check, see if he's out there.
He wouldn't wait out at noon.
No, he probably wouldn't, he was. Did we try to call him? All right, we'll take a break, but. Let's go ahead and take. Just going to take a short break. I recall meeting back to order and uh. John Stump, Mr. Stump? You talked about the Oak Hill Tiff. Now, I think, I think what the commission wanted them to do. We don't think it's valid anymore or it's.
We're underwater.
Underwater. Now, who has the uh, responsibility, does the commission have the responsibility to? Go away with the tip, let's go, Oak Hill have to agree with it. Can you explain all that to us?
Um, you all have the ability to terminate the tip. Um. Oak Hill doesn't have to agree, they may. Want to do that, ask them just to adopt a resolution, agreeing with it, that's up to you all, it's really a political question than anything else, but they don't have to agree to, to the decision.
And it's my understanding from um, City of Oak Hill, Allison Navarres here, um, on their behalf, that Oak Hill has no objection, that they, they see no. Um, reason to keep it in place.
I think you probably want to adopt a formal, one-page resolution, just, just banning the tip district, um.
Should you put it together? Should Mike put it together? Who? Is that?
I'm happy to do it.
Would you please?
Sure.
Okay.
And.
And then we'll put it on the next agenda.
And then Allison, would you ask the city to, to pass a resolution that it no longer needs it?
Now, you do have some funds in the tip fund. I talked to Eddie here about, you all want a break, and he says there is money in. The tip fund, so those dollars can be utilized for projects in Oak Hill, if that's what you all want to do.
Yeah, we've already designated. Along, in here, analysis, projects specifically, raise, pray the fund and keep the bills, but more.
So we can just go ahead and vote to support that.
Well, I think it's already, okay, well, I, I thought because the way it was set up, that's what it was for anyway, is Oak Hill, Oak Hill.
Right, you all just have to approve the use, the specific use of funds. It, it is approved in their application.
Okay.
Andy could probably answer the question about the money. I, I just knew that they have, you know, since twenty twenty. It should have started producing money. I don't know, I'm not sure your opinion, I think they're, they'll probably do it.
They did manage to cover it. I'm in the region, I want to go to the ground, I'm going to stay, the smaller one, that was, it was too, very small. The other one, in this region, I don't know, it goes with the, the ground.
Can we think of anything else?
Could you, just, uh, our next meeting is June the fourteenth, is that correct? Wow. Could you have ready for us?
No, that's the problem.
And you all got any other questions?
Do we want to, do we want to vote to remove it today or do we want to?
I think, go ahead.
I think you wait until the presidency.
Till the resolution is drafted.
Just do it formally. It, it'll be one page, it's not a big deal, but that way you have it in your, in your record that it's been disbanded.
Then on that same day, can you guys also provide us your plan for allocating that money, so on June fourteenth, we can go ahead and approve that?
Sure.
Allocation. Um.
You go to Ruth?
Yeah, to Ruth. And just by week before is fine, by June seven. Ruth dot Lanier at Fayette County WB dot.
We can put it on there.
Okay.
Well, you may need to. Let it know so it can be prepared for that. Well, yeah, we can let, yeah.
Okay, so I think that's it.
And if there's anything, it's.
Anna has a question with.
About the last year.
Well, when did they actually purchase the property? Uh, I think we got the D in March.
I'm sorry, but I mean, I have to get numbers from him and then I have to re-cryptify the load rate. So, we didn't have it.
It's a good question. We haven't actually. We've never disbanded a tip that I know of, so let me think about that, and, because it would be, it'd be cleaner if we could terminate it as of the twenty, the tax year twenty-two. Um, that way it just goes away, right? You know, the thing is, thing is, right? It, it'll be in the resolutions that they consider, I'll, I'll have to figure that out in the resolution. My thought is, is we can, I can. We can do that and that'll make life easier for everybody, and there's a negative number for. For twenty-three anyway. So, I don't think there'll be a problem.
All right, one more thing before you go.
Sure.
Uh, you plan, will you be here the fourteenth with the resolution?
I can't be here the fourteenth, I am in Wearden tonight, so.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll probably take up, we've still talking about the other tip, so that's why I was going to ask you if you'll be here with, I guess we can.
Well, I can, I can call in.
Well, we'll be in touch with you then.
That'd be fine, and we could call you from executive session.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Is uh, Amanda online? It's ten fifteen.
I am, good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. There was some grants that Ruth was talking about, and I was wanting to see if you might want to go over to the commission, go over us uh, regarding the grants, and I think. The commission may have a couple other questions about uh. Some things that we met on the other day, so do you, do you want to? Give us the uh, input on the grants you was uh. Discussing with Ruth or emailed us?
Sure, so there are two open broadband grants at the moment. You have the second round of GIG Ready, which Fayette County is eligible for. Because you, you applied for technical assistance, so because that happened, you're eligible for this one. The second round of GIG Ready is going to be for implementation, so shovel-ready projects, so projects that are ready to hit the road. So that's, there's GIG Ready, that's an option, and then USDA Community Connect is also an option. USDA Community Connect, the max of that grant is five million. And it is really geared toward very rural areas, so it's geared toward areas that. Would be very difficult for an ISP to get to without, without some kind of assistance from the, the federal government, so those, those are the two ones that are open.
So.
The second round of GIG Ready is due, the pre-application is due early June. And the, the full application is due in July. USDA Community Connect is due on June twentieth.
So really, this is not just a commission, the ISP in conjunction with the commission would have to uh, submit the grants together. Basically, is that, am I correct? Am I correct on that? Okay, so it's not just a commission, so basically our plan with uh, Gigabeam would have to be ready before we can uh, submit these grants, correct?
Yeah, so they would have to be on the same page, so for the GIG Ready program, you're, you've already selected your ISP, you're good to go. For the USDA Community Connect program. It sounds like, and we've looked into it a little bit, it sounds like you could. Kind of lean on Gigabeam to see you, because you have to have their financials and things like that, but you would may have to re-procure. For that particular program, because it's a different set of funding cycle, uh, funding, so. But yes, Gigabeam is a very large part in these applications. You have to have their financials, you have. You have to have their financials, you have to know what the, the take rate and things like that are going to be, and those are things that only the ISP can tell you.
Right. But I figured that's what that was, but I wanted everybody to understand it.
Are there matches for these two grants required?
Yes, so there's a twenty-five percent match for GIG Ready, and there's a fifteen percent match for USDA Community Connect.
And GIG Ready, do you know how it's funded? Is, is that state funds or is it federal funds? USDA is federal, but.
Right, USDA is federal. So the GIG Ready is funded through ARPA funds. So that's, that's kind of how they, that's how they funded it. I do believe so.
And right there, there's a big discussion, a mess about, um, co-mingling, uh, ARPA, federal, and all this other, uh, in the grants, and it.
Sure, so.
Federal funding to match a federal grant, is the, right?
Yeah.
Right, normally that does not, it's not allowable. Now, USDA for a reconnect, which is a different program, they have allowed ARC funds, which are considered to be federal, to match their funds. So USDA has said ARP funds are an allowable match for the Community Connect program. They wanted us to also confirm that with the State Auditor's Office, and we're in the process of doing that as well. So it's possible that ARP funds are eligible to be a match for Community Connect. For the GIG Ready project, because it's funded by the, the West Virginia's Capital Projects Fund, I mean, the ARPA allocation, ARPA funds, to our understanding, are allowable as matching funds, but we will, if you decide to go down that route, we will confirm that for you.
Now, what was it?
Do they are non-allowable?
Are allowable.
Are allowable, so.
With our understanding, for GIG Ready.
Well, he, he, we had a meeting the other day, I believe, and he said that it's not for sure yet, but that's the way it's leaning towards. Is that correct, or is it finalized?
No, so we would confirm that for you to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, uh, and, and the other thing we was talking about the other day is there is a, uh, location availability challenge study out there, or something that we can do. A gentleman from, uh, Gigabeam emailed us with some information, and I, uh, on a survey, and I was wanting to see if, I don't think we've done anything like that, or he gave us some other ways to implement this to make it more effective to show that, that, uh, that there's not correct service in certain areas. Is that something you can help us with, Amanda?
Yes, sure. So what he's talking about is the FCC came out with new broadband maps, and those broadband maps, they allowed you the opportunity to go in and say, this isn't correct, and tell them why. Now, a lot of those surveys have already been submitted. We'll have to double-check. I think the window is closed to submit, to submit any any discrepancies that you may have, but we can double-check on that for you. But they have come out with a new broadband map. We actually got it last night. I can send that to you. So you have an idea and see if that's any better. There were a lot that were submitted for West Virginia to say that they were not correct, and some were accepted to say they weren't correct, and some were disputed to say, no, we're, we're going to stick with this. This was actually when they did, when the FCC did their research, they found that their data was, was correct. So there were a lot that were disputed throughout the state.
So what about Fayette County? Have you got the information on Fayette County?
So, yeah, so the new FCC maps are out, so I can send you those, and you can kind of look over Fayette County and see what you think. You can check your locations, your areas, and see if they match up to what you know that, that they should.
Okay, so you don't, really don't know whether any of the disputes held up in Fayette County or not?
No, not specifically.
Okay.
Well, we, I mean, we looked at some of the locations in Fayette County on the map with Gigabeam the other day, and, I mean, I can tell you, they don't have a hundred mags at Kimberly Pollard, for example.
Right.
Um, and that's what it says. You know, we can't even get cell phone calls up there to communicate with law enforcement. So, um, is it, do you think it, the state said, according to this email we got, that the state broadband website stated that these things needed to be submitted, these challenges need to be submitted by January thirteenth, but the FCC website says the challenges and corrections are ongoing. But to me, it doesn't, it would not hurt for us to go ahead, it might help for us to go ahead and challenge these. And, and let them know that there are multiple areas in the county, just from our broad brush looking at them the other day, uh, for multiple areas in the county that don't appear to be accurate, because I know, I live here close to the courthouse and do not get a hundred mags in this area that has, uh, more reliable internet than others, such as it is.
Yes, yeah, and that was realized across the state. There were many areas that didn't seem to be accurate.
Yeah, and then I had a question. I mean, I asked Gigabeam, and I wonder what your take is on this. As they're collecting these numbers, when they're saying, when the FCC is saying, well, a hundred mags is, is the access that this area gets, is that, how reliable does that hundred mags have to be? Like, you know, my speed test, you know, well, let's go down to fifty to be more realistic, if I'm, um, my speed test rarely hangs up at fifty, um, despite my paying for that service. Um, it's more likely to be around thirty and, and on average, and I test it a lot. So, um, do you have any idea, like, what the standard is? You know, because I, I could see them asking people to do their speed tests, you know, in the middle of the night or something.
In the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, our, our speed test is done at one o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I might get a, I might get a fifty, I might get fifty mags at one AM, but, but I'm not going to get them at, you know, one PM.
Right, yeah, yeah, when there's no one else on the, on the, the service, that's when the speeds are higher. But so the way that they've looked at it in the past is they looked at it by census block, and if one person in that census block received those speeds, that entire census block was looked at as served. And that's where the dispute came in from everyone, because that's not accurate, and we're aware of that. And so that's where everyone started raising their hand and saying, that's, that's not accurate. I don't have those speeds. So that's why it was also implemented that we could submit you know, the disputes and, and the things like that, to say that this isn't accurate, we don't receive these speeds.
Any other questions?
Well, I, no, I don't have any more questions, but I, well, are you going to work with GIG Ready to apply for these, this funding? Like, how do you think the funding should be? How, how should we apply? What should we apply for with who?
Well, so if you have any projects that are that you think are, are ready, so it would be a conversation with Gigabeam as well to see what they're, where they're at, uh, what they're comfortable with, and, and go from there. But yeah, we'll be more than happy to help you or to assist you in the application process.
Everything, everything revolves on, by, maybe. Basically.
I think to this end, we ought to look at these questions and, and come up with how we want to get this out, so we can get to work on this challenge.
Oh, I agree.
Um, the only thing, when I reviewed it, the thing that I want to make sure that the speedtest.net is the site that the FCC recommends people use. Is that the one they recommend they use? I just want to make sure that that website is the one they recommend, so it's consistent, you know, because some, I can do a speed test on one, and this is the one I use, but I can do one on a different one and might get different results. So, don't know why that is, but, um.
You're talking about, uh, speedtest dot, that was something.
Yeah, yeah, just make sure that we use the same website in our, our survey that the FCC uses to do this speed test, so we can document that. And I think we ought to add a question about, um, is that speed consistent? Because.
Maybe a time.
I don't think it is. Yeah, maybe have them do it at, but we don't want to ask people to do it at one AM.
No, but I mean, a time that they done the speed test. Peak hours, eleven, five.
Or maybe have them do three different days or something at different times.
No, I mean, I, I think, yeah.
Things that you through that we make it, the more responses we get, though.
I know, that's true. Three different times in the same day? I mean, really need, you know, you could do it one time and you'll get, you know, if they do it at one in the morning, it's going to have a different.
No, just tell them between, uh, uh, twelve at night and, and six in the morning. I think that we, that we should know what time they did test. Is there any way you could automatically tell you what time?
Just say time and, uh, speed and time of the test.
I mean, it should, they should automatically do that. Can we make it, can we make it automatically do it? Or does it give that?
Speed and time and.
Well, we can just ask them the day and the time of the test, like the day of the week. So we can know what day of the week they do it. And I don't think we should say, what is the approximate speed? We should say, what are you paying for? And then what does this website tell you? We don't want them to go, we don't want them to guess and say, I'm getting a hundred mags when they're not getting a hundred mags.
So, so Amanda, if we put together what we want on here, and, or would you be the one, uh, put this out for us, or put it together for us?
The survey to send out to your residents?
Yes.
Yeah, we can, we can help you with that.
Okay.
I think we should ask them what the speed is supposed to be. And then.
What you're paying for.
Yeah, are you getting that speed?
We'll see if we can get this something today to her, or tomorrow, get it by tomorrow, and email, give it to Ruth, and then our opinion, and Ruth email it to her.
Yeah. Work for us, work for us.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get this to you today, Amanda.
Thank you, thank you, man. Any, any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Amanda.
All right, thanks. Have a good day.
You too. WBC Court.
WB Court?
WB Court, yeah. Good morning. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm with Vivian Parsons, and I'm with the West Virginia Communities Risk Pool. And I just come this morning to say hello, um, to let you know that the pool is doing well. The, um, you can have it all ready, receive your renewal, you will very shortly. They're going out as we speak. Once you do receive that, you will see that the board has approved again this year, for the third year in a row, the, um, discount rate on the renewal of, the board approved three hundred thousand dollars to come back to the membership, and it's based on the percentage that you pay into the total premium pool. So, um, you should see that again on your renewal, which is good news. That means we're financially in a good position. Um, you, from the map on the front of the hand I gave you, you will see that we are growing like crazy. We, back in twenty twenty, opened the pool coverage to municipalities. Of course, that was mid-pandemic and things were a little slow to get off the ground then. However, they are, uh, keeping me busy onboarding at this point. We are up to, this was printed the first of April, and we're about eighty-five municipalities today. Probably eighty-six, because I just got a little ding on my way here of another municipality that came in and joined. So that's going very well. Uh, our member, our authority members that we cover is over a hundred and forty now. That's solid waste authorities, PSDs, Economic Development Councils, emergency squads, health departments, anything created by county or city government, um, and we can ensure that. We are also able to ensure VFDs now. We have at least three that I'm aware of, three volunteer fire departments that have come in, so we're covering them as well. So things are going well with the pool. I, uh, have brought some information. I always, I know most of you have been here a while, am I calling that?
No, there is people signing on that. Want to hear what you got to say.
Okay, sorry. Um, I thought maybe I was too close or something. I have a really loud voice, um. So I brought some information. As I come out and visit with county governments, I like to remind them that beyond the excellent insurance coverage that we can provide and do provide, we have a lot of resources available, local governments at no expense. So my, uh, thirty-plus years with county government, I know that there's never enough money at the local level. So I want to remind you what's there. The first handout just is a list of your lines of coverage that we provide, like any insurance company out there. We provide all of those lines with a little explanation about each one. And of course, we provide your cyber risk coverage. The pool, uh, the, the policy itself includes some basic, um, cyber coverage. There is also the option, and I don't know, I haven't looked at your proposal, but I don't know if you've opted at any point to take additional coverage, but there is the option on your proposal to, uh, increase your cyber risk coverage to a silo coverage just for Fayette County, not shared with the other members. So you'll want to look at that when you review your, your proposal. Uh, also, a brochure about our property evaluations. When you first come into the pool, we send out folks to do a property evaluation, and then we put you in a five-year rotation, approximately a five-year rotation. COVID got us behind a little bit, and we're trying to catch up. But we send our folks out, they do the valuations of any properties in the county that's valued at seventy-five thousand and above. And then we provide a report to the county commission for your signature, and so, um, I don't know where you stand in that rotation, but, you know, you will get a report in the valuation this time. Okay. About every five years, and we try to keep you current on what you have and, and what the current values are, then, um, work with you to make sure we're insured for that. The next handout is public online member portal. Uh, I bring that to you just so you're aware of the information that's available to you through your, uh, password and login. It's not public information, it's information to the member itself, but you can get to all sorts of claims reporting tools, you can print out your history, you can look at trends, and, uh, maybe you do it once a year and look at your workers' comp history as well as your property liability, and look for trends and things that you might want to address. Um, there's also a claims viewer, so any claim that you have in can be viewed for financials, for details of the claim, who your claime, uh, adjuster is, and you see the rolling diary of that adjuster. So you have access to all your information. You run the pool. As a member of the pool, you're a part owner of the assets of the pool, and you're entitled to your information. So we make sure that you have that. Uh, also, that's how you report your claims, of course, um, both your property and, uh, property liability and your workers' comp. There's a lot of site tools on there that we've added more recently. You can see your schedules for your properties, you can see your schedules for your vehicles, your equipment, what that we have them valued at, what your deductibles are. There is a site tool where you can add or delete properties, vehicles, or, or, uh, equipment along the year, throughout the year. We want you to do that when you get it, or when you get rid of it. So that in, uh, January, when that renewal questionnaire comes out, it's a multi-page document, it's basically a printout of how we have them covered. That will be most up to date, and it'll just be a review on your part. Um, let's say, uh, July one, you renew, and September thirtieth, you buy a new vehicle. Go ahead and add it in here. We're not going to come back and invoice you for that vehicle. We'll pick it up in the next rotation on the next July one. But we encourage you to go ahead and get any new vehicles in, eliminate any old ones, and you can do all of that through the website. So it's available, the tools are there to do that. You can also request certificates of, of, uh, insurance right on the site. It goes directly to our underwriters, and they'll email it back. Uh, the other thing that's there, and what I'll talk a little bit more about, is paid resource and risk control, now media resources and risk control, but a lot of tools there for your use. Of course, nothing we provide has any expense to it, ensures to use, cut, pays. There are shelf documents on there for policies and procedures. We try to collect them from across our membership and list them there for your use, whether you want a driving policy or some other policy put into place. Rather than starting from scratch, it gives you a source of, um, shelf documents. There are, uh, the in-house webinars that we have, we, and, and, uh, film, we record them, we put them on there. One that's used a lot is the, um, sexual harassment webinar that's, um, recorded on there for your use. If you have a new employee come in and you want to make sure that they watch that and sign off on it, it's there. A lot of, our members use it for that purpose. There's PowerPoint presentations, uh, that we have put together, and if you're wanting to do some sort of. There's PowerPoint presentations, uh, that we have put together. And if you're wanting to do some sort of training in-house, we still do all of our training in person too. Uh, you know, like everybody else during COVID, we had to really ramp up our online presence. So a lot of that is the result, and we want to make it available to you. Um, one of the other things that I'll talk about when we get to it in these handouts is we have a, we at least subscribe to a video library of trainings on your behalf. We, we pay for that, you can use that at no expense and you use our login and password. And if you have maintenance crews that you want to do some monthly training, presentations, whatever, whatever the case may be, you can get to them and I'll point that out as we get here. But a lot of stuff online beyond just your coverage, and we want to make sure that you know it's there for you to use. Next brochure is about our employee training, and I bring this brochure because on the back it lists a number of the topics that we have. That's not all inclusive. If you have something that you want and you don't see it on there, contact us because we're always developing new stuff. And the way we do that is through what our members need. So, one of those programs is law enforcement training, and we've had this around for a long time. We have a very robust law enforcement training program. We know that's where a lot of your exposure comes from, and that's natural that by the nature of what they do. Uh, if you look on the back of that, you'll see that we have submitted our training programs to the state police and have qualified them for continuing education credits. Your law enforcement officers are required to have sixteen continuing education hours every two years. And we've been able to get up to fourteen of those in our program. We can come and provide that. We have a retired law enforcement officer who does our training. So that holds more water with law enforcement officials, like he's been where they've been, knows what they go through. Uh, so, and we can come and spend a couple of days. We know you can't take all of your officers off the street for, you know, for a class in one day. But our guys will come out and they'll do a couple of days with you and get as much of that training as they can. So, on that next page, um, now it looks like this, um, this is that video library that I was talking about. It's called Safety Source. And at the bottom of that page, you'll see our username and password that you can use to pull down any of those. Um, and it also lists the contacts for our risk control program, our manager, Chris Ballard. John Molding is the senior public safety, um, specialist that I was talking about. He's a retired local police officer. And so he has a lot of experience. And then Jim McClellan has also been there a long time too. We have a new guy whose name is not on there, Justin Presser. Justin is, uh, former military and was a trainer in the military. So I'm hearing really good things about the training that he's, he's helping us with. So, yeah, if you are interested in some training and you just give Chris a call, you can give me a call and I can hook you up with them. But he can tell you, you know, what timeframe, what we have available, what timeframe to get it here and all those sorts of things. He'll work out the details. Any questions on any of that training before I?
I got a question in all this, but go right ahead. If the commissioners are okay.
Just a couple more things. I bring the Gather Guard program brochure because I like to remind local governments that it's there. It is not a product that is actually insured through the pool but placed by the pool. And if you have county properties, uh, that you, uh, either rent out or allow the public to use, but for a particular event, a one day or a one-time event, and you want them to have some coverage, uh, and you'd be the third party coverage on that, then you can, you can direct a constituent to this program on our public website. Uh, it will be under services and, um, coverages, and they can find that, they can apply through an application online, they can pay online. And for, and this brochure will give you more details, but for about a million dollars of coverage, you're looking at about a hundred dollars. I had, uh, one of our members tell me that they had a class reunion coming in and wanted to have a class reunion on, on some, uh, local government property, and they went through this and it cost them seventy-five dollars for, for the coverage. And so, um, and then the local government is a third party insured on it. So it's there anytime you need it. And the last brochure there is just truth about pools. Questions come up from time to time. And so we put this brochure together with a lot of the common questions that we hear or are asked about the pool and how it operates differently maybe from the commercial world. And so we want to make sure that you have access to those, uh, Q and A. So that's pretty much what I have to share with you. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you have. You have my card as well if you need me for anything. Um, my background, as you, some of you know, um, my background is in county government and, uh, customer service, not insurance. I, um, was with the association, the, the county commissioners association for twenty-three years as their director, and I was with the association of counties seven and a half years before that. So when I retired back in twenty nineteen, the pool asked me to come onboard and and work with them on customer service simply because I was familiar with county government. So, um, my real goal in coming out to visit you is make sure you have all the information of what you have access to and to see if there's any issues or problems or concerns with the product.
I got one question. You mentioned something about volunteer, you, you've insured some volunteer fire departments.
Yes.
What, do you know what? Is it the engines? Is it the buildings?
We insure everything for them. We do property liability and workers' comp.
Okay. How would you get a, how would the commission get a price, or figure out what it would cost for, uh, insurance? I mean, I already know what they all pay. I don't have, I can't use that penny, but I've looked at all their budgets and I heard about what they pay with everything. How would a county be able to get a price, a quote, just for, just a, of kn- knowledge?
Yeah. Well, there is a certain list of information that we need in order to put a quote together, and I can all certainly get that to.
Could you email that to Ruth?
And I will leave it with Ruth. I have a copy in my bag. I'll leave it with her. Uh, and that's how we put a quote together. And, um, I think sometimes it's, it, it seems to be a little more difficult for volunteer associations, of course, VFDs. Our department is the only volunteers that we actually cover. And that was my vote of the board because of their problems with workers' comp and everything. But, um, there is a formula for how they calculate their workers' comp and because there's no payroll, of course. And so, uh, I think sometimes the difficulty for them is putting that list of information together just because they are all volunteers and it just adds to the workload. And, but I think, you know, like when they settle down and actually get to it, we've been able to be very competitive in pricing for them. And I will tell you, the three that have come in, um, are in the northern panhandle and they were having issues with their workers' comp, going outside of state lines on memorandums of understanding, you know, such a narrow strip up there. And maybe running into some issues with coverage, um, from their current carrier. And we told them, you know, if you choose to do that by memorandum of understanding, we'll cover you. So they made the effort to actually go and, uh, push forward to get that information, and we were able to save them. And they're happy with it. So.
It sounds like you, you, you could.
Well, I will get that list to Ruth. I'll leave it with her. And, um, yeah, if you ever want me to come, you know, if there's a fire association meeting, you'd like for us to come and just explain to them how it works, we're happy to do that. We've done that a time or two, and so just let me know. You love my.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything that we could do.
I have a question too.
Sure.
We, we have a couple of properties. We oversee the county park. And we also oversee a building here in Fayetteville that, um, is used for community events and things like that. And as we explore our options, we're trying to, um, make those more profitable. Right now we run at a significant deficit for running those. Um, but if we want to hold events and things like that, um, are we going to need to seek out additional coverage or would that be a part of this or?
Well, my bailiwick is not insurance, but I will tell you, I can, I can get our underwriters to talk with you about it, but what I can tell you, anything that is, uh, has oversight by the county is part of your liability coverage already. So when you are allowing the private sector to use the facility and you don't have oversight over it, that's more what the gather guard comes into play. But if it's a function that the county is overseeing, maybe it's affairs and festivals kind of thing.
Summer camp.
If, if the county is overseeing it now, summer camp, I haven't had that question, I'll be honest. And that could bring new liabilities that I'm not familiar with. But I know with fairs and festivals, if they are run by the city or run by the county, those are, your liability is covered there. I will be happy to get you more information about that.
We would like that.
Okay.
We do have summer camp coming up, but we, we also hope and intend to, to create a plan to, to host events and things like that there.
Okay.
To have for our park director and our park board to do that.
I'll talk to Stephanie, Stephanie Brown in our underwriting. She, uh, she's a guru of that kind of stuff, and she can give me a little more information, just explore it a little more. And I'll send Ruth an email on it. What Stephanie has to say about whether she thinks that there would be additional coverages, and she may have additional questions before she can answer that, but I'll, I'll get in touch with Ruth and.
Ruth can likely answer them.
Yeah.
I will also, we have directed people to your Gather Guard, and it's a very easy website to use, and, um, a lot of people have used that for new one of willing, um, for communities, so.
That's great. Yeah, I have one, um, member who had a class reunion coming in, I think it was with one that's in one of their parks. And they were going to be bringing their own alcohol, they weren't selling it or anything, but Gather Guard did cover them and it was like seventy-five dollars for the class reunion. So it's been a lot of excessively priced and it does offer a many dollars coverage for that amount. So. But I will talk with Stephanie, uh, about whether there may be some additional, um, insurance that the county itself might need, um, as you open the doors to more events. I know if they are county events that your liability is covered, but I'll now ask more about that camp situation.
Well, and on our renewal, it asks if we do fairs and festivals, I guess, so.
I know if there's some festivals or something, if it's a county or function, then we're covered. Anything else? It's always great to see you guys.
Right, you too.
I like to get out and see the old familiar faces, maybe meet you. It's good to see everybody. Thank you for giving time on your agenda. I know you've got a long one. Let you get back to.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, is it a little late, but Abby? Do you want to be, you want to be giving us presentation, Doug?
Oh, I'm here to, that's about the pool.
Oh, okay. I just, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious. It's not, it, the pool and the facility, it's more the the whole property. You and I met uh, with two gentlemen that was supposed to do a plan or talked about a plan for the park a year, two years ago. How long was it?
He talked, we met with someone about a trail plan.
And but there was a conversation I had with you and I've also had with Wayne about other development in the park.
Uh, cabins?
Cabins.
So the conversation that we had about cabins was related to the trail plan. And you asked to put on the trail plan a spot for potential study for cabins later. And that was done. And that's as far as that conversation.
So we do have something to show all that?
Basically, it is the soft surface trail plan that the Fayette Trail Coalition put together with help from City of Hill, Town of Fayetteville, um, Fayette County, WDC, and the Energy RBA. Um, it was all that four county property trail plan, and there's a spot that said to be assessed for cabins later. That's all that was done there. And that conversation that we had with those two gentlemen, there is trail. They have no.
No, they said they didn't do anything else besides the trails.
Correct.
But I mean, I thought, I thought me and you talked about other, other developments and, and maybe cabins and stuff.
But cabins have not been on that list since I've taken over, um, director.
Okay.
So I apologize if that was not investigated.
Well, I mean, I, I went out there, I, I spent a lot of time with Wayne, looking at the property and talking to you guys and trying against the, tried to convince the trail guys even give us somebody that can write a plan or a master plan or survey or something. I mean, I.
Yeah, they were, they are very specific in that world. They do not know anything about those.
But I mean, you, you know, you knew more of what, you know, and I'm only one commissioner. But what I maybe suggested that we could put together to better develop the property out there, and I don't think I've seen anything else brought to the commission. I mean, I, I'm just asking, I mean, as.
I've put together priority lists, but I've not put together any plans.
Well, we did, we received a priority list yesterday.
There, there was the priority list that we had a meeting with the park board here, that, first. We had the budget presentation where I, um, detailed some thoughts. And then at our most recent park board meeting, we did come up with priority list that I sent you that was after the park board reviewed it.
Yeah. Okay. Do you remember what, what time of year and when we met about other developments in the park that maybe could be put.
January, uh, twenty-one, I believe, is when you and I met about the soft surface trail.
And we talked about walking the property and other developments and cabins and stuff like that. Was that about the same time?
I think that was all the same.
All the same time?
Yep.
So was it closer to two years ago?
Two years and I was. Position at that time, and it was focused on the trails in that plan, and I think that was communicated to you, and I apologize if the county, you know, cabin plan was not done to.
Well, it's more than that. It's just the whole big plan about it, but I did, you know, cabins was a big, even when somebody, I, you know, I was thinking about this the other night after the commission's got a bunch of crap over all, a bunch of stuff. So you know, e- even people that go out there and have, uh, do their reunions out there. Where does all them people come from?
Well, I'm with Fayette County residents.
So nobody comes from out of state?
No, there are, it's what you do. But I'm just saying that, oh, the majority of the people that utilize.
They don't have anybody, but that's what I'm saying. They may, they may be a Fayette County resident, but anyone that I've been to, not everybody stays and, and most of them come from all over the place. And that.
We appreciate the hotel motel tax that funds our county park.
Well, but, but what I'm saying is, it would be nice if some of the family members in the reunion could maybe have a cabin. I'm just thinking outside the box, have a cabin out there and say, I got me a cabin out there.
Yep.
Right there and.
Yes.
They're all that.
To do water and soup and all those, um, infrastructure studies as well.
So, and just the big plan is what?
Well, there are actually cabins out there on it.
Well, I mean. More of an expansion of the existing infrastructure.
So.
And I may have reached out to, um, one of our board members who's part of West Virginia University Extension, he's connected me with some, who's engaged there, but potentially to help with some competency study. For it, Melanie Seiler, another board member from Southern West Virginia, connected me with some grants that hopefully could facilitate paying for a grant.
And I'm glad you, glad you mentioned it because I think the county paid two thousand dollars for the study or the.
Once, a thousand dollars.
Once that was one thousand, okay, I was wrong. Okay, so I think the commission would be willing to do about the same thing when somebody put a master plan together for a development or re- rent, make, make, improve it. I mean, I, I think the commission would be willing to do that. And I'm just, you know, I just, I don't, when, when you took this job, I'm just curious why, you know, even some of the stuff I mentioned hasn't been pushed towards, you know, don't be afraid to come to the commission and say, you know, you know, I know y'all want something. Here's what I think. I mean, so I, what I'm trying to say is in twenty twenty-one, in January twenty twenty-one, we talked about doing all kinds of stuff and bringing it to the commission.
I appreciate you saying that because I haven't always felt that I could come to you guys so that I had the communication. So I really, really appreciate you, um, saying that.
But has there been any action on our part toward you other than, because I remember telling you you could come to us. And I remember telling you you could come to me personally, and I've given you opportunities, talk to me with Ruth and Ruth responding to us. So have we ever discouraged you once you have come to us?
No, but it's been difficult at times to get ahold of you and there's been, um, and this is, I'm just thinking of maybe one case, so this is by no means a broad brush stroke. There's been, you know, multiple rescheduling and I should put it to be more proactive.
I mean, presenting something to the commission, all it takes is you putting yourself on the agenda and giving us a presentation. That's not us saying, brow beating, you say, I don't want to hear it or nothing like that. I mean, that's just, that's you coming to us, not, and I mean, I'm confused, but.
Sure. So I, I appreciate that and I will.
Well, I read the priorities from the, from the park board. Did the park board discuss, um, the memorial building when you guys were discussing these priorities? I just didn't notice any memorial. I just didn't notice any memorial building related. Was this just about the park proper?
It, it was. We all met in here, kind of the memorial building, we talked about briefly. But as far as like a specific list for the memorial building, I don't know with the park board members, but have enough knowledge about that. I mean, I think Abby's been great at getting people there and the visibility of that building, but the functionality of it. I couldn't tell you the one thing that needs prioritizing.
We think we probably need to have it studied too, is where we were leaning.
I think that's a little outside of our, our.
Well, I think once we have the study, that the park board can take a look at some of the recommendations.
Right. I definitely think that would be a good here.
Come up with that and probably coordinate with the town of Fayetteville on the memorial building issues, I think. But um interestingly, um I did take somebody down to the pool this past week. Who believes the estimates we've been getting, you know, they're um the lowest one was close to seven hundred thousand were exorbitant. Um he believed that, and, and he's an expert in those areas, but he believed that if we were to advertise more broadly. And Abby and I discussed that with Ruth at a meeting this past week, but, but more broadly within the country that we're more likely to get. Rather than have a construction company, you know, come in and, and make an exception, you know, do something they don't normally do. Have a pool company come in or a company that does hotel pools or things like that um to come in, but but he doesn't think it, it's going to be as big a deal to repair that leak. Um the big concern is whether there's something underneath the pool that's causing the problem. Um but the problem we're running into there based on Ruth's research um with um, it was a Greenbrier. Amy's research. Um Amy, you want to explain that? That's I did that wrong.
We discussed um a geotechnical evaluation of what's underneath the pool, what might be causing, where the water's going. If there's no, because you did a dye test and the dye tested and show where the water is escaping to. Um so the fear is that there's a vacancy underneath the pool. And if you put a new pool in on top of it, you're just gonna perpetuate the issue or have a bigger issue on down the road. Um and uh Greenbrier Environmental, I reached out to him, Matt Ford, and he put me in touch with, now I'm not gonna remember the name of the company. It was Geo Technical, something from um Charleston. And their chief engineer called and told me that he can come out and do a site evaluation, but um we were asking for a quote, but there's no way to quote the work that might need to go into doing the actual investigation and remediation. But he would suggest um not letting. The county because if you're, if you, if, if the water's going into the soil, it's dragging the soil away from the pool and um you're just gonna have a bigger problem.
Worse and worse.
Yeah. So he can come and do a site evaluation, but then for a set amount, but from then on, it's just kind of the cost would be as needed for the remediation.
Well, I mean, uh a reasonable first step to me is, let's see if there's coal mine under there. That's a reasonable first step to me. Uh I think there are other, you know, things they can do and tools, instruments that they have for geological surveys.
And that's what he would do.
My father-in-law used to do that for like mining companies and everything. So, I mean, they, there are instruments out there that could probably, you know, using sound and.
And he didn't go into detail because it was just a, an, an initial conversation. But he said, I mean, I'm pretty sure that would be what the next steps were. He just was reluctant to give an actual dollar amount quote because they can't without seeing it first.
Well, I, it sounds to me like we need to do we need to request quotes for that or do, or request proposals or seek companies, maybe call three companies and try to get them to come in with initial quotes to just um to study it and see if there's anything obvious.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, because, you know, for the public's information, we don't know what the problem is. So it's kind of hard to fix it until we know what it is. And it's been an ongoing, you know, task to try to diagnose what's wrong. So we don't put money into it and then waste the money that we put into it.
So we got a R F P. Can we go ahead and put that, make a decision to put that out today, to have a geo study? Estimate them in, give a price, prices?
Maybe ask Matt if he can, if there are any other companies he knows of that we can, you know, at least field it to three different companies. Uh that one and, and two more, even if they're not in state. I mean, we can start with in-state and go out and then with regard to the study. Um and then I think we can also approve a master plan, you know, requesting proposals for a master plan for the park and the memorial building. And then with regard to the pool, um actual repairs on the pool, I really think we need the geo study information before we can decide. I mean, we.
And there's all, I guess all of them would have to come out and look at it before they can give a price. Is that basically what he was saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know.
Well, I mean, I want to know. What it's going to cost to get them out here first and then we get them out here and pay them. And then they can give us a price of what.
I mean, he, he was, I, I kind of picked at it. Well, no, I kind of picked at him until he kind of said the last onsite initial visit I did.
So it's not like a pre-construction. That's a good try.
He was very clear that he's a professional of this and this is what he does and to.
Can we make a decision to authorize so much money for that, for uh, did he even say what it would cost to do that?
Twenty-five just to come out and.
Twenty-five dollars?
Yeah.
Now, is that added to what it's going to cost?
I think that's just a.
That's just to get diagnosis.
Yeah. Do they do the geo study, Don?
Yes.
Okay.
So Don is the one other, so S and S does it. And who's this? U P R?
They, they do uh ground penetrating radar and they do all the mine studies and things like that.
Do you know of anybody else?
No.
Okay, so.
So there's three of them. No, that's three plus what?
That was an abbreviation for ground penetrating radar.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So if we could, if we can at least get that moving and then I think if we can get a um do you think a request for proposal for a master plan is what we need to better what request for qualification, which would be what other must like then submitting other park plans that they've done. I mean, there's companies that do county plans, but that's going to be different than recreation study for a county park and a memorial building. So. Why don't you look, why don't you look into that and, and, you know, draft something that we can approve at the next meeting?
And the next meeting is important.
Yeah, it's not to, I mean, frankly, if you send it around, I think we can go ahead and prove it in concept today and.
I, I have some questions.
Okay, um well, I was just gonna say, so three things here. So we're gonna do that for both the memorial building and the park. And Amy's gonna do the groundwork on for the commission to get some information on what's going on with the ground.
Yep.
Um and then the next step, once we know whether or not we can put the pool there, we're gonna have to figure out um whether we want to do repairs or whether we want to fill it in and relocate it. Basically, what's gonna have to happen. So um but what do you guys want to do? Just have her get together, you know? I mean, we could go out just like we're doing with this other thing and, and find three companies to do that kind of thing and.
Well, that's what if she, if she looked up, there's a, there's a website, correct, Amy? In the web, there's a website for contractors.
Oh, the Tracetrackers Association. Yeah, yeah, you have that.
Well, I mean, that, even for this, even, okay, and probably.
That's just for the state, but I'm sure there's, um I've not been directed to nationwide.
Yeah, well, that, but also like, I don't have a problem with one nationwide on that again, because we might not have that expertise here in the state. Um certainly not in the county.
Yeah, I'll reach out.
Well, we may.
Contacts, um the O E D C and the Energy R B A have done some work and so they will be able to help us with those within the state or outside of the state.
Well, my county might have information on how they did Shawnee.
That Upper Convalley Recreation Plan. Um we've got Cheryl Ellis.
All good places to start.
Yeah.
So if not before, we definitely want to buy them next year. If we have it before, then we can, we can. I agree.
Okay, can you tell me about a meeting that the three of us were supposed to attend there this weekend?
I know what that is. I know what that is. Ruth and I were going to have follow-up discussions with Abby. We, we met with her last week and, and it got cut short because I had a lunch scheduled for work that I had to do. Um so with Becky Sullivan. So we postponed it. Ruth and I were going to get down there. The last, it was past last week. Um and then things just got away from us. We had our meeting and we weren't able to get down there. So I think that's what that meeting refers to.
Okay. And then um how's the camp going for the children? That was, that was help funded by the, the commission.
It's going really well. We just need more campers. So um Allison was gracious enough to connect us with W O A Y after her conversation with them um earlier this week. And we've had a few other media, um Fayette Tribune, uh fifty-nine News, and we've advertised through all the different schools. So Shelby, the campsite supervisor that we hired, is really just trying to beat the doors down and get um junior counselors as well as campers registered, but things are moving along.
How many campers do we have registered so far?
I've heard it's on Schoology. I am not a parent of a school age child. I don't know exactly how that works, but I have had some parents um talk to me and they've seen it. And I also had one send me a picture of flyers that had gone out. So um I will reach out to them again.
Well, yeah, because I have like Facebook groups and I haven't seen that.
Okay, that's good to know that, yeah. Um do you know who runs those?
You can post publicly on him. I mean, I've.
So we have ten people signed up for camp.
That's it?
And when's it supposed to start?
That feels like the word isn't getting out because I know my mom, any vacation Bible school that existed, we were in it and signed up. You know, your people need things for their kids to do.
And, and what was the date of the camp again?
June twenty first to July twenty eighth.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, that's um, you know, all this. Yeah, that, okay.
Board of Ed just to give us the number of students they have enrolled that are those ages. And we can make copies of the flyer and, and give them to the board of ed and send all with the kids.
Saying, you have put them at the schools. Um there's uh some teacher that have distributed them. We talked to the counselors at Valley, Tara Stewart, Tim Lussey, and they can share the information. So um it's kind of continued up.
But I'm talking about simulant home with every single student that in that age group at our expense. I mean, we can you know, make that number of copies and send them out. I mean, it can't be that huge. I mean, our schools don't have that many too.
A perimeter intermediate seems to be a large campus, but yes, yeah, it's a few hundred.
A few hundred, but I'm not, we're not talking tens of thousands. I mean, the population's only forty thousand.
Yep, so.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
I wonder if these kids are nine through twelve are going to want that.
Maybe they are, that is our primary way of reaching.
And private schools too.
Yeah, we have, we've dropped off flyers at St. Peter Paul, Mountain State, Montessori, Christian School. So they all.
Have you done an interview with Luke Bresch yet?
Yes, we also have the, we, we quest his, got an article.
Okay.
Anything else, John?
Now, that would get right.
All right. So at this time, I move that we go into executive session to discuss items seven, nine, and ten on exhibit A. That is um our response to Judge Blake about the probation space. Um employee update on P E I A, get legal advice. Um and uh to discuss personal changes and solicit possible legal advice on that.
Okay, I guess I second that.
Okay.
We'll call the meeting back to where we had. We discussed uh.
Okay, yeah.
We didn't make any decisions. And what else?
What, okay. All right, so we've received. Legal advice on the issues I mentioned. Um we made some edits to the letter that we're gonna uh send to Judge Blake. So let's, let's first, I'll move that we approve the letter with the edits that I'm gonna make after the meeting.
Own favor.
Um with regard to P E I A. The question was, in the past, um the county has only been providing, has provided one option, which is Plan A to P E I A, the county insurance. Um but it turns out that there are other plans available to county employees. Um the issue is that the county is, that the issue is whether the county is willing to pay additional money for the extra plans. Um I think that answer is no. So the question before us was, you know, employees can opt for additional, for a different plan, but they would have to pay the difference between the Plan A, which county reimburses at this time, and whatever other plan they select. So I move that we adopt that as a policy, that Plan A, the cost of Plan A is, is the amount that we'll, we'll pay um in addition to the employee amount. And if the employee opts for a different plan, they have to pay the difference.
Second, own favor.
I, and we're to do a memo and send that out, please. Um with regard to personnel changes, county administrator proposed um couple of changes. One is um we, she proposed that we create a position of deputy county administrator and um promote into that position, Gia. And in justifying this, Ruth provided Gia's original position description for staff accountant and provided multiple additional duties that Gia has assumed in the time that she's been with us. Um along with that promotion, uh should we, so I'm gonna move that we create the position of deputy county administrator and um place Gia in that position.
Second, own favor.
Um along with that, we would like to offer Gia a raise to fifty thousand dollars a year, or that's what I'm gonna move. Um and then you guys tell me what you think.
Second.
Own favor. I do want to mention that in the changes and raises that the commission is, is talking about, we've actually eliminated staff, three positions. Yeah, we eliminated three positions and put most of the work on less people. So that's.
We're trying to compensate them for the extra work that they've taken on without compensation previous to today. So along those lines, we have another employee, Wilbert Lydely, who has also taken on a bunch of additional responsibilities um in the short time he's been with us. And for that reason, I'd like to move that we raise his salary to thirty-six thousand a year.
Second, own favor.
Congratulations. Thank you for all the hard work you guys have done. Really means a lot to us. Um I've been joking that these two employees do not let us. Um, I've been joking that these two employees do not let us have their phone numbers. And that that should be a screening question that we ask in future interviews if they're willing to give the commissioners their phone numbers, if the answer is no, they should be hired. But anyway. And then, was there anything else?
I think that was it.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.